Well, good morning. This is July first, two thousand twenty-five, that's kind of Board of Commissioners. So we have an exciting guest with us this morning to talk about trash or good stuff.
Garage and.
Recycling, so take it away.
Awesome. Um, yeah, so we'll get straight into it. Um. First things first, our marketing, um, I'm still running radio ads on W V O every month. Um, uh, so put back some funds so I could run another full page ad and this, um, last month's town money saver publication. Um, get great feedback on those. I can tell as soon as it hits the masses because I start getting calls. Um, I've advertised with them in the past. We just ran like a nice, here's what you can recycle thing for your fridge. Um, I ran a new one with new information on electronics, um, household hazardous. Um, that sort of stuff. And what's great is you pay for a full page ad. He keeps you in there a lot smaller for the the coming months. Um, so yeah, we'll be in a few future issues for no extra cost. Um, events this month, um, later this month, I will be giving a recycling talk at the Mount Vernon Public Library. That'll be on July ninth at six P M. In their little basement meeting, um. I've not hosted an event there since twenty seventeen.
Wow.
When I was an unpaid intern for the Brown Family Environmental Center, I had a turtle program there. They had a bunch of turtles there. And I was like, tell Noel, Noel, I was like, I love those turtles so much. I was like, you should let me, you know, take them out, show them off a little bit. So for the first time in eight years, I'll be doing a presentation there. Um, so I'll be reviewing current protocol, answering questions, um. I give them the twenty minutes beyond that, as you can tell, people love when they can just ask questions. What about this? What about this? What about this? Uh, and on the very next night, um, it's my turn to host as a board member for the Friends of the Kikosing. Um, basically a special event. So June special event, we did a full moon kayaking event, which was super fun. Um, really nice night for that. Um, I'm leading a night hike out of Wolf Room. And we're going to begin on the litter prevention trail. So that's one of the things Randy put in, you know, where you put plastic and styrofoam and then you cover it up. And then it sat there for what, seven, eight years now? So over time, you get to see uh, an apple core will biodegrade and styrofoam not so much. So we'll probably do that. Um, it'll be a full.
What time is that?
We'll probably meet in the lot closer to like eight thirty. Basically, the goal is I will keep in a light for an emergency. But generally speaking, it's no lights, no nothing. It's full moon. Uh, you get in the lot. Let your eyes adjust and then take over from there. So. Um, as far as springtime, uh, spring cleanup was great. Uh, the Friends of the Kikosing and I went to every river access point. Um, in one week or another and nearby roads to pick up trash. So, you know, that really cuts down on our litter. It's just getting it. Obviously, spring is the opposite of our September fall cleanup, um, in the river. So it's a good way for us to kind of keep that stuff out. Obviously, we get lots of rain and flooding. So the treasures that wash up, you know, all this fun. Um, when I go to elementary school programs, kids always ask me if I find a treasure or something. I don't think we have much of a pirate history around here because I never find anything of value.
You're just not looking at it in the right place.
I found a weird garden gnome troll, gargoyle, little guy, and he keeps watch out by my garage. From now, I give him a forever home. That's about it. Um, yeah, the river cleanup is coming. It always seems to sneak up on you. Um, I got a call from some folks with Rotary. So we have new groups calling. They're already wanting to get involved. Intensive planning usually hits right after fair season. There's not much I can do. Now, and like I said, we're at this point, generally the same groups do the same segments. So everything's really streamlined. Um. It's really not not as hectic as it used to be, and we keep having lovely weather. So hopefully that will continue. Um, but it's good. I've been putting some stuff out on social media, you know? If bigger groups, not just walk-up volunteers, want to get involved, I'd rather hear from them now and get them on a segment, get plans for that. Um.
So if they wanted to do that, um, what do they need to be prepared to do? And I mean, they wear just scrappy shoes or you rubberize?
Those shoes that you insist that you might need for something. Um, yeah, but I, I basically always ask a group, how long do you want to be out there? Do you want to be out there for an hour and a half to two and a half hours? Or do you want to make a Saturday out of it? Um. But yeah, basically just plan for the weather. Um. Obviously, if we have, if you're going to be out on a kayak or canoe, making sure we have personal flotation devices, all our safety stuff in line. Um. But yeah, so I think we'll have Rotary helping us this year, you know, but we can always use a few extra hands. Um.
So do we, would they wear gloves and?
Yep, all the supplies are.
Provide the canoe or the kayak or whatever.
Um, it depends. So Craig Gilmore, um, who has been partially the lifeblood of the event for a long time out there at Kikosa and Camp and Canoe. Craig's very, very, very helpful. He, he runs it Saturday morning. So groups that are Gambier and further east usually end up on some of Craig's canoes. And then the groups in town, um. The group Andrew went with a couple of years ago, the OD and R group, they also bring water crafts for everyone. So um, any walk-up volunteers have to fill out paperwork, but everybody else knows the drill. Um.
But people who don't know the drill, that's never been there, uh, are they walking the riverbanks?
It depends. I usually keep, I usually keep the, the day of volunteers here in town because um, in movies, it's the Wild West. In the river, it's the Wild East, obviously. Factory Rapids onward. Things get a little more adventurous the further east you get. So the stretches here in town, Andrew can attest to this. His electronics have survived many trips down these rivers. So.
But they're fairly calm.
But yeah, walk-up volunteers I usually send with OD and R. Um, they do take a few crafts with them if it is deep enough. But yeah, usually a lot of the walk-up volunteers, um, usually stay walking or they start at the depot and then they go about to the edge of Memorial Park and the big like that. So. Um, Centerburg, this is, I think, the hot topic of the list, um, which this meeting is a very weird timing because they should be announcing something tonight, which I won't get too carried away with talking about, but um, the school wanted to remove the bins. Had nothing to do with the quality of the bins. It was because they wanted to repave the lot. That has caused a lot of problems. Miller Township, which, so you had Centerburg down here in the southwest, you got Miller directed the east, you got Liberty up here. If you can believe it, are great recyclers around here. When their bins get taken away, they go to their nearest ones. I also was getting calls from Jennifer Way Young in Delaware County because some of our residents, which it's within the solid waste district. So.
That's true.
Legally, that's fine. But, you know, I was getting called from Jennifer's, like, keep your residents out of my bins. And I'm like, I can't do that, but okay. Um. I understand the frustration. I went to the Hillier Township trustees. Um, that one about as you would expect. And then Jenna and I went to the village. It was about a month ago. Um, so Monday, Big City Council meeting. So basically, my job was to answer questions, um, talk about maybe future options. And then Jenna came. Um, since D K M M Hope helps oversees a lot of communities, specifically outside of Knox, Delaware County, where they're using a curbside system where lowest bidder wins. Um, they're looking into basically treating it like utility trash and recycling is curbside. Um. I have currently not been given any final answers, but Jenna spoke about curbside. I spoke about a new bin location. Um, if by chance the village decides they do want to go curbside, I still would like to find a way to get a few bins out there because what about Hillier Township residents that aren't in the village? Um, it's the same thing. When the, even though the city has the ordinance, we want to do opportunity knocks because if you're in mixed family housing and you don't have access to the ordinance, you have a way of getting around it. So, um. I think something more formal will be announced tonight. I spoke with Mayor Sands last week for an update. I don't want to go on too much about what he told me because I'll let them announce that. Um. But the bins outside of Centerburg, um, the bins are going well. Um, obviously, you got a call from a trustee in Miller Township, which is one of those adjacent bins. So yeah, you take away these ten bins that fill up twice a week.
Say, what do you have four there in Miller? Is that what it is that I?
No, we have, uh, we just added one.
Did you?
Yeah, it was getting pretty full. So I went out there. We had some illegal dumping. Also, the bins were just filling up. And so I got that reported to Rumkey. And then when I went out there, I was gonna, well, I talked to you guys that day. I, it was pouring rain. I got super muddy that day. Rumkey, you know, they're like, well, for the safety of our drivers, but bedbugs, you gotta go out there and personally wrap it. Well, it was gonna storm that day. So I was rushing out there. Chat to maintenance department. They had some plastic wrap for me. But I get all the way out there and it turns out Rumkey had picked it up anyway. So. Um, I did speak to his name was Randy. He was in a little township garage there. I gave my cell phone number and it was like, please keep these bins here. If you have any problems, get ahold of me, you know? So just establishing a contact because you're always going to get illegal dumping. You're always going to get nonsense, Memorial Day weekend nonsense, Fourth of July nonsense. Um. So just making sure that they know that they have somebody in their corner to help them because I appreciate that service. But later that day, um, we got it approved with Jenna, Rumkey, and also with the trustees. We added a bin out there to help with some of the extra Centerburg traffic. And like I said, Miller usually fills up anyway. Um, the city slash partner events, we, I, I co-sponsored a tire take back. Tanner basically is like, hey, give us X amount of dollars and we'll take our trash day and our tire day. We'll make it instead of city residents. If you kick in two thousand total dollars, we'll make it so all Knox County residents can come to our events. Um, it's a pretty good deal. So I took them up on that. So we had our tire take back day at the fairgrounds towards the end of March. And our trash take back day, I believe, was very, very early May. Um, both events were incredibly well attended, giving people subsidized ways to get rid of their stuff that they need to be responsible for. Um, for better, for worse is important. A lot of program managers across the state, they don't kick in for these events. They hate these events. They're like, people need to learn to be responsible. If you need to get rid of a mattress, you need to learn to pay for it. Or if you need new tires, you need to pay for it. I have a feeling if that happens, it'll end up for myself and the Friends of the Kikosing to deal with in our river. So I'm trying to step ahead. Um, you know, I do have some department funds to kick in, be able to support these things. So I'm very thankful the city wants to continue doing it and by kicking in two thousand total dollars, you know, somebody from Bladensburg could come in. So.
No, Tanner, the total cost is probably eighteen hundred.
Yeah, two hundred dollars for him to go up this Friday night. I don't understand the process. Um, we also, and we did a shredder event. Obviously, we chose not to pay the almost ten thousand dollars in the hotel cost for the repair staff to come down to fix our shredder that we had at Op Knox. Um, so we did one here in the Commissioner's parking lot on, I believe it was like May tenth. It was perfect. We hit, we had to turn away like two or three cars at the end. But we said like nine until noon or until four. It was right about noon. It was very steady. It was much better. This is before your time. A couple of years ago, is the first one we did after the pandemic. We hosted one. And somehow Bill and I got stuck on being the traffic control people yelling vulgarity. So that's out the window. Bill and I had to manage the traffic. So I think that's a general trend.
But we did it in the side by.
We also didn't decide. Yeah, which we, even doing it in the long parking lot, we do get a line there on Chestnut for fifteen, twenty minutes. But obviously, on Saturday, folks can pull over, use our parking spaces on Chestnut. So.
And people came like a half an hour before it started.
Yeah. Yep, um, same thing this year. You say nine, people line up at eight thirty and the shredded people and C S, they were fine to run it and get people in and out. So. Um, last but most certainly not least, uh, the compost facility remains in a constant state of usage. That's our old phrase. New contractor, Green Machine. What I do love about our new contractor, Justin, he's the head honcho out there at Green Machine. They are based here in Knox. So if I need something or they need something from me, we're close by. He's got my cell phone number. Um, I do feel kind of bad. He inherited quite a mess to clean up on. Um, but other than that, I think we're doing our best to kind of get control out there.
So is the malt mountain starting to decline some, Matt?
It comes and goes because it takes a lot of people going out there, getting free mulch. To anyone listening to our live stream, please come out to the compost facility. Seven, four, two, five Thayer Road. There's free mulch out there. Um, and we have tons of it. You can have enough for a huge project. So you get malt mountain declined, right? And then it's nice out. And then we get a summer storm. So then you get all the stuff out there. Green Machine grinds and that mountain just keeps.
So did they start putting some of the mulch down in the drive because of the muds and? The last, the only reason, I think I told you this once before, last time I was out there, you could only go in about fifteen or twenty feet into the malt area, into the dump area because I mean, there was mud, ruts, I don't think I would have got out of if I'd have got back in there.
We are very susceptible to the elements out there. Um.
You're a politician, man. I don't know if putting bulk in there is gonna. Well, just something. I mean, yeah, it, 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 it's bad.
It's, it's tricky because obviously we do operate this for no extra charge for residents. Um.
And it's greatly appreciated. I mean.
Absolutely. I do think it's something we get great feedback on. People are, I hope the message gets to everyone downstairs. But people are very thankful for it. But other communities are charging every nickel and dime, every resident, every business. Um, obviously, Jason and I went out to meet with Jenna. We talked about some options. And when we pitched maybe making some changes out there to keep things a little more sustainable in the long term, you know, we have to deal with what we have to find a mutualism for something that works for us, works for the residents, works for the businesses, and also for the contractor out there. So we're kind of on this, we're only on a one-year contract with Green Machine, trying to get caught up. But I, I do foresee when that time is up, you know, we'll be having more conversations to find something.
For Redder County, right, Green Machine?
Yeah. So and park, especially in the home stretch. I don't know how well they were making contact. There was a handful of times over the years where I had to get on them. Hey, twice a week means twice a week. Go, go out there. Um, and you know, they're, they're further away. They have a bunch of contracts like we're keeping this local business very busy out there to say the least. But, um. I didn't want to do this, but I decided to do it. So in the past, what we would do is so we are on a Republic contract here for the county buildings. Luke McMillan, our rep. We would get some trash here or there. Once in a blue moon, I'd go out there with Luke. We there are the trash in his pickup truck. He'd take it no extra charge. Just because of all the peculiar stuff that had been buried that we realized since it's so busy, like things get buried over the years. Um, we're having a problem with and by trash, it's not always egregiously bad things. We're, I'm not talking a couch here. I'm talking treated wood. You know, which, which can be ground up. So they asked if we could put a dumpster out there. So we have a small dumpster there under lock and they have the equipment. They just move it around. Republic picks it up like once a month. But basically, Green Machine asked me for this. Hey, just so we don't have to wait on anything. If we're uncovering a pile, we're trying to grind through it and we need this stuff out of our way. Um, obviously, I was a little hesitant because I don't want people to turn it into a dumpster.
Exactly.
Um, sometimes I don't trust the general public these days, but, um. You know, how could I? Um. Overall, I'm always open to suggestions, um, on how we can get better out there. But our problem is the community loves using it. Um, obviously, like anything else, high traffic means high traffic. We get these summer windstorms. I was gone. I was in Cleveland last Wednesday. But I heard we got a storm and it knocked out some power. So do you think it got busy Wednesday and Thursday? Absolutely. People don't wait. So.
Can we back up to the, the beginning and just tell people, uh, since we're streaming? When you say electronical devices, some of the things that they might be able to bring out there to get rid of it, Opportunity Knocks.
Yeah. So Opportunity Knocks, which is located, was it seventeen, six oh four Kishockton Avenue? So if you are heading towards Howard, Ohio, um, you know, your health department's on the left, the jail's on the right, go a little bit, little bit further. There's a big brick building there called Opportunity Knocks. You'll drive past that. There's a maintenance barn and Monday through Friday from nine to eleven A M. And two to four P M. Um, residents can take electronics there for drop-offs. So if you have a phone, if you have a keyboard, if you have, I don't know, those little things that get receipts, they're really not too fakie. If it's written something like this. The only thing that you can't really take out there consistently is TVs. TVs, first Friday of the month out at the Village of Gambier. Ever since we stole Dave Height House from Kenyon, Kenyon didn't want to do it anymore. So the Village of Gambier stepped up. First Friday of the month, this Friday, which is a holiday, as far as I know, it's still happening from eight thirty to eleven A M. Residents can take TVs out there and all electronics. So the first Friday of the month, basically all electronics outside of freon containing devices. Um. If you do have a freon containing device, like a, an old window A C unit or refrigerator, something like that, there, um, are people trained at Opportunity Knocks. Um, best thing to do is call out there, make sure, um, whoever's out there, they will take things out there and safely remove the freon. But yeah, for anyone that may be listening, we do have options for electronics out there. We also have our D K M M Household Hazardous Waste Take Back Day. I don't think I've memorized D K M M's new number. I think it's four, one, nine, two, five, one, two, two, nine, zero. But they, they're traders and they have a Mount Gilead. They don't have that seven, four, oh, number anymore. Um, but if you go to D K M M dot org, Knox County residents, um, one Wednesday every month is dedicated for residents to be able to take household hazardous waste out there. Your paint, your, I bought a property and I have all this stuff in the garage that I don't know what to do with. They'll take anything out there for one dollar a pound. So.
TVs that go out to gamers or feet. There isn't fee at certain.
Yeah, and it depends on the TV. So it used to be all of them were twenty, then some got to forty. They're taking a lot of the flat screen ones for free now, believe it or not. Um, usually the rear protection TVs and the C R T TVs can cost anywhere from twenty to forty dollars to get rid of. Um. I, yeah, if you're interested in the, the heavy details, I put all this stuff out on the county website because they always change the prices of TVs. But they used to be twenty dollars no matter what. And then they had a forty dollar tier for the really old really, uh, hazardous ones, I should say. And then, yeah, the, like, the, most of modern flat screen ones, the smaller ones that are under a certain thing that they would take like free. So.
Thank you.
Thanks, man. Thanks, Matt. Oh, one, one last thing. You and I talked about, uh, um, there's chunks of logs out there at Thayer Road. And if people want to come to grab that for firewood, you're saying that so it would be permissible for them to load up the, you know, chunks of wood out there?
I can't look into the camera because these things are shifty. But to anyone out there, less I know. There's a lot of money to be made. If it's in the gates of the compost facility, you can go take it. Help yourself. We have firewood. We have mulch, sticks, limbs. I, I know people that do woodworking. Go out there as long, if you can load it yourself, you're doing the community a great service by taking it. Um, rumor has it, it's Fourth of July weekend, bonfire season. Please come take firewood. Stop paying for it at gas stations. It's, it's free. Please take it.
You can't, you cannot bring chains also out there to cut stuff.
No, I, I like, obviously, like, within a safety parameter. So if Chip is out there listening, um, you know, if you can load it yourself, you're more than welcome to take it. Um. Something that I would like to do in the future is, you know, we do all these one-day events. I would like to work something out with Green Machine or a local business that maybe has a front-end loader. Would it be something one Saturday lineup on Thayer Road, you know? Everyone out there will scoop one thing of mulch for you if you bring a pickup. I think that'd be a cool idea because we do need this material gone. Green Machine does take some of it. But if there are any entrepreneurs out there, I feel like there's a lot of materials sitting out there that can be profited off of that you're doing us a favor by taking. So.
Yes.
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 And you. Have a good day.
You're on the happy Fourth of July.
You too.
My firework from the guy with an eye patch and two fingers. Listen, he's got the best ones.
Absolutely.
Commissars, we just have a couple ones here. We have an addendum number five for the sublease with the Ohio Department of Public Safety. And this was related to Knox County Title Office.
Motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Those favorites say aye.
And all three things. Then we have a utility permit for the Knox Energy Co-op and Apple Valley Drive, Howard Township.
Number two, Jim.
Second.
He goes, the favorite say aye.
All right.
And another utility permit, Knox Energy Co-op, this on Monroe Mills Road, Howard Township.
Motion approved.
Sensitive.
Those favorite say aye.
Aye.
And I think just a couple of things I have. One, the Community Foundation just dropped off their annual report and you can look through it. It just lets you know where the funds that they have provided the county have been directed. So that's for your information. Um. Excuse me, we had, do you have one set of minutes that need approved? And I want to let you know, uh, Cheryl's not here to let her know, but, uh, Case Burgle and Lisa Lloyd, we've been trying to get together on that one Ohio to get that grant application. That's proved a little more difficult with everyone's schedules. But, um, uh, we were supposed to meet yesterday, but something fun I expected this came up that we weren't able to meet. So we're still trying to get together, but that, those Koreans, I think Cheryl had booked our article that maybe they were going to get out like July one and it's not going to be ready quite yet. We want to make sure we really have it ready and vetted out.
Your vetting process didn't happen yesterday.
Not yet, no. So we're gonna get back together, hopefully maybe even next week, but it's gonna be a little bit later than July one. I just wanted to let that, let that get put out there. And, uh, we're going down to some Eastern Army here shortly to check on the progress of the um, children sits up.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's an after school program, daycare center.
And I think just, you know, for the, that was, we provided five hundred thousand dollars in ARPA money, the commissioners did for that, to put towards that project. And so, uh, just kind of go down there, check on that Sunday because at eleven, I think we're getting on air.
Clock.
Last week. And other than that, commissioners, that's all I have. Thursday, we will not have a formal setting, but session, but we will do, uh, bills. We will have bills on Thursday.
And we do not have bills.
No, I'm today because it's the first day of the month. Yeah. So it'll be probably a pretty big bill list on Thursday.
Good.
That's all I've got.
Okay. Uh, Galen, do you have anything you want to?
No, we ain't. Why?
Okay.
I had questions. I didn't know if I was liable to interrupt. Say, hey, you know, something going.
You can ask it now.
I have a front-end loader. I can load them buckets. I can go out there and load for people if they want to back up there. I think, yeah, no front-end loaders out there.
Well, no mechanicals. You're basically shovel to put it in.
Other than the contractor, we have liability. They've got a liability insurance.
So you'd have to work that with Matt.
Yes, I was. I was always going out.
Because you're just.
They're great. Have a load before anybody coughs.
You, you just might, but we do have cameras.
I know you do.
And they work these hours. So, do we start anything this year?
Just, I was on advisory meeting, call yesterday with President Trump about the big beautiful bill. And it would put five billion dollars annually in the next four years to subsidize non-public. And it would put five billion dollars annually in the next four years to subsidize non-public school education. And families who make less than three times their local median income could receive five thousand federal scholarships. Uh, it helps for homeschooling, private schools, um, taxpayers, no tax on tips, do that car loan interest rates, it's a huge bill. Uh, retains tax rates from twenty seventeen and increased child track tax credit, it's really good for families and so. Um, I just encourage legislators and people to let their legislators know to get behind the president's big beautiful bill. And I stand with the residents of Knox County and, uh, their desire to. Not have solar projects on prime farm land, and that's why I motioned in the first meeting as Commissioner to revisit SB fifty-two, which we adopted. That's all.
Yeah, but, uh, everyone have a great Fourth of July, cause we won't have a Thursday meeting. Uh, for anyone to, uh, watch, so have a good Fourth of July. Motion, New Jerk. Can we stand it, Jerk?